Give me just a second, I'm trying to hold my. Okay, he had to reboot his computer, so he'll be popping up here any second.
Hey, Mike?
Yep.
I believe you're muted.
What's happening?
Looks like Mike is muted for some reason, I'm not sure why.
Oh, I'm getting a message, experiencing network connection difficulties. To improve audio, close any unused internet apps, or switch to phone.
Interesting.
That's weird.
That is strange.
Well, we can hear you just fine on your end.
Can hear you.
I believe.
Yeah, can't hear Mark.
Mark, maybe you should reboot.
Or you can try and call, in addition to having a computer, you can call the number. In addition. Let's see.
And, and we don't, still don't have Mike.
Unexcused absence for Mike.
Oh.
Oh.
That's delinquency.
I'll be.
I'll be back.
Yeah. You and the Terminator.
Schwarzenegger accent, is it?
I'll be back.
That's right, I'll be back. I, I know where, where I am, our internet has been like just crazy, it's sometimes it's so slow, it's ridiculous, and then all of a sudden it's fine.
Yeah.
I, I think this.
We've got problems up here, too.
It's.
Who knows why?
Been, been the past couple of weeks, it's been like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's because everybody's using it so much, I guess, you know, it's, it's wearing out.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know where Mike is, so we'll go ahead and get started, so who's going to lead?
I'm, I'm, I'm here, I'm here.
Oh, you are here, okay. And we don't see your picture, your video. Um, but anyway, let's go ahead and get started with the, with the pledge, who wants to lead that? Dan, you want to do that?
Dan does.
Sure.
You have a flag, okay.
Oh, there we go.
Let me put the flag in the correct way. Okay, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jan. Okay, can we have roll call, please, in that?
Yes. Commissioner Anderson?
I'm here.
Commissioner King?
Wrong button, I'm here.
Oh, there she is.
Sorry. I'm here.
Commissioner Shaw?
Oh, we can't hear him.
He just, he just dropped out.
Okay, Commissioner Wolf?
Here.
Um, Commissioner Zirk, as we know, is an excused absence, Vice Chairperson Van den Eyckhoff?
Here.
Chairperson Derris?
Here.
So we have six present and one absent.
Okay, and that was, yeah, an excused absence.
I'm, uh, here's, here's Mike, I got myself unmuted.
Okay, all right, Mikey, we got you on roll call, thank you. Okay, can I get an approval of the agenda?
I moved to approve.
Let's see, so Gina moved, and who seconded, was that Dwayne?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Wolf?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yeah.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Chair, Vice Chairperson Van den Eyckhoff?
Yes.
Chairperson Derris?
Yes.
Motion passed with six zero.
Okay, thank you. Do we have, do we have anybody from the public that's tuned in right now? Do we know?
Yeah, there's one person that wants to make a public comment now.
Okay, okay, so, all right, so we're all open, this is about time for public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on a matter not on the agenda, over which the commission has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes, please state your name for the record before making your presentation. The commission may take action to direct staff to place the matter of business on a future agenda. So if the person is wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda now is the time.
Hi, everyone, this is Mariah, I am going to let Wayne, he's our first speaker, and he'd like to comment now.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Wayne Rittering, I'm the pastor of the Lutheran Church of the Redeemer on El Camino Road in Tascadero. And I'd like to begin the meeting with a prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the freedom that we have in our country. We pray that you would continue to bless our nation. Keep our military safe. Please bless our president, the vice president, the Supreme Court, the Congress. The legislature of the state of California. And we pray especially for Dan Dow, our district attorney, that we would protect him and his family. Please be with Sheriff Ian, and our chief of police, and all of our police officers. We thank you, Lord, so much for the grace that you've given us in Christ Jesus. And we pray that you would preserve and defend the Judeo-Christian foundation upon which our nation was founded. Thank you that you forgive our many sins, and you've promised to heal our land and give us restoration and peace if we just turn to you. So we turn to you now, Lord, and we ask you to heal our land of the COVID-19 pandemic. And bless those who are unemployed because of it, those that work in the hospital, all of our business owners. Please guide the teachers, students, homeschoolers, our school staffs, and our school boards. We ask you, Lord, to bless our San Luis Obispo County supervisors with your wisdom and guidance. And finally, be with our mayor of Tascadero, the city council, and their meeting tonight. Father, we turn to you for all these blessings with our praise and thanks to your Jesus Christ our Lord, amen.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. Uh, just for record, Wayne, this is not the city council meeting, but that, you're still welcome to join us.
Oh, that's, this is the number they gave me to call.
This, well, this is the planning commission, not the city council.
Oh, sorry.
We are almost just as powerful.
Ah, yeah, that's what I hear, okay. Oh, we'll pray for you guys, too.
Well, thank, thank you very much for that, thank you.
Okay, good night.
All right, thank you very much, have a good evening. All right, let's move on to the consent. Let's move on to the consent calendar, we have just the draft minutes of July 21. Somebody, unless somebody would like to pull that, do I, can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
I second.
Well, we have Jan moved, and Jeff Van den Eyckhoff seconded, so can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Van den Eyckhoff?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yeah.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Chairperson Derris?
Yes.
Motion passed with six zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, community development staff reports, we have none, but we do have a public hearing, which is on the Del Rio area specific plan amendment at 1905 El Camino. Do we have any exparté, let's start with that, and I'll just go down the name, Dwayne, any exparté, I don't know who you have exparté with, unless it's the city, but Dwayne?
Yep.
Jeff?
No.
Mike?
No.
Cory?
Nope.
Jan?
Nope.
And I have none as well, so with that, I will turn it over to staff for the report.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, members of the commission. Tonight, we're going to be giving you the full story on the Del Rio specific plan and the background, I'm going to get a presentation up for you to see here in just a moment. And we're going to talk about moving forward with a long-awaited part of our city that has long been held up by some very unusual conditions that were in place from many years ago. Let's see if I can, uh, let's see, you should be able to see my screen, my presentation, are you able to see that right now? Or is it something?
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and start that presentation here. There we go. All right. Let's get through this a little bit here, let's see if I can scroll through. Just a moment, I gotta get the, uh, little screen out of my way, so I can see my screen, I've only got one screen here, all right. So a lot of this is really based on current development trends, what's happening in land use, and things have changed a lot over the last decade, and even more recently, obviously, with COVID. And so that's one of the big topics tonight, what are the current development trends? How do those current development trends alter the area traffic at Del Rio and Highway 101, which has really been the topic of the Del Rio specific plan for a long time? And how could we amend that plan in response? Well, lately, we've gotten several new development projects up there, of course, you've seen the new hotel, it's now finished. We also have several other projects that are in the works, and we have several other proposals. And primarily, in order to continue moving forward, we have to amend the specific plan, and have to amend the environmental impact report that goes along with it, to respond to the changes that we're seeing in traffic. So for tonight, we're going to be talking about really three specific topic areas, and what's going to happen tonight is we're going to end up with a recommendation to city council. This is a city council action, they'll, they'll take a look at this on September 22nd, and they've actually evaluated this in the past and given us direction. But in summary, we'll look at the Del Rio specific plan, its history, its background, some of the proposed amendments that we're talking about tonight, and the environmental impact report, we love to call them EIRs, the big, it's the reason you've got a big staff report there, EIRs are big. And we're going to be doing what's called an addendum, which is really an amendment, a minor amendment to the EIR, so we can understand how these land use changes change mitigation measures, because the traffic numbers change anytime you put new land use in place. Delving further into the background, when we talk about the Del Rio specific plan, we talk about the area that is primarily at the intersection of Del Rio and El Camino Real, and most of the land is to the east of El Camino Real. It's all that vacant land that currently is owned by Walmart, a big section of it, there's several lots there on the south side of Del Rio, east of El Camino. And then there's several lots on the north side of Del Rio, east of El Camino Real. Only one parcel in the entire specific plan is developed, and that's the one on the west side of El Camino Real that's got the new Hilton Home Suites Hotel on that retail property there. In general, the whole specific plan is outlined in red on this map. And it's been locked up primarily because of the way the environmental impact report was written. It allowed Walmart to proceed first, then it had to wait for certain improvements to happen. Then the other properties could develop, but because Walmart never proceeded with a plan, nothing else could develop. That original specific plan goes all the way back to 2012. It took several years to complete that environmental impact report in that specific plan, and at the time, it was a 39-acre property that was all retail development, really anchored by the Walmart, and further anchored by additional retail pads on the other properties. And now it's begun to change already, the first, the first big change we looked at it was in 2017 for the hotel. We did an amendment at that time, we also did an addendum to the EIR at that time, and that resulted in a very successful project that's now come to fruition. But now we've got to finish the rest of the puzzle, because it's a blank slate out there, it's vacant property, and things have changed again. So the former, the former Walmart project has officially been put on hold indefinitely, that happened in 2017. The property still is on the market. One of the things that does influence our decision-making when we think about future land use is, who can buy the property? What can they do with the property when they buy it? We know there's been buyers that have, you know, continued to pursue purchasing a property, and I think that's the case now. And we do know that typically, when these properties are sold, they're sold with a deed restriction that prohibits land uses that might compete with Walmart's interests. So that's likely to happen. The other main thing to be aware of is, when the Anax project, which is a project on the north side of Del Rio, and the Walmart project were approved, they had a certain length of time that they needed to move forward with recording their maps and doing their improvements. That all expired on all of those sites in the specific plan this July. So the timing is perfect to look at them then, all of the master plan of developments, in other words, the development plans for the sites and their subdivision maps of properties are expired. When we talk about a specific plan, what a specific plan really is, it's like having a little zoning ordinance on a part of the city. It allows property to develop with unique standards that are a little different than zoning, they're custom, they can do some cool stuff. And you can expand what they can do in terms of their property development standards and their land uses. That's critical to making something successful, but sometimes what happens is you make those specific plans so specific, and then nothing develops for 10 years, and then the demand for land use has changed, and then you've got to go back in and say, all right, we have a whole new palette of things we want. That's where we are today, so the amendments proposed today look at changing what the project really is in the specific plan, and modifying what can be built here. And mostly modifying what can be built here to respond to projects that are going to reduce the amount of traffic, so that the taxpayers and the city and the developers don't have to spend an enormous amount of money redoing the Del Rio interchange in building a series of roundabouts at those intersections. So if we dial back the land uses and look at what people are wanting to build nowadays, instead of large retail, they want to build business parks, offices, they want to do tourist serving and place-making development, things like hotels and small resorts, and things alike wineries and breweries and office parks and things that are light industrial, those are the trends. Those are the trends that serve both jobs, and they serve economic benefits, and they're the things that are going to survive no matter what. The difficult things that are surviving nowadays are onsite retail, when you can buy everything online. And of course nowadays, even recently, restaurants are suffering, but again, I think that will change, that's a short-term issue. So these amendments include amending the list of land uses to respond to the demands of today, modifying the specific plan to be more acceptable to different land uses, and in turn, looking at modifying what we need to do for traffic to accommodate what we think is going to get developed on these sites in the future. And then in general, removing the site names from these projects, we had formerly called part of the site Anax, and part of the site Walmart site, instead, they're going to be called just North and South Development Sites, in summary. So right now, the way the environmental impact report is written, it really prohibits the development of one property before the other properties develop, before certain traffic improvements are done. The intent of this amendment, the main intent, is to make it an equal playing field, to let either property develop at any time, as long as they can meet certain criteria in achieving mitigation for the traffic impacts. Now, back in March, the city council looked at this whole concept, and asked us to move forward with these amendments, and in fact, they actually canceled the roundabout project at that time based on a set of alternative land use scenarios that we had proposed. In other words, we sort of looked at these properties, looked at the applications that are coming in, looked at what the owners wanted to build, and we made a series of scenarios based on the most likely alternative land use that's going to happen there. And then we based it, then we based our traffic analysis on those scenarios, so we could come up with, what's the worst case? If we get those things developed, where will we be in 10 years, or 20 years down the line? What kind of traffic improvements will we need? Well, the new land use plan assumes a lot less traffic. It's primarily because there's less retail here, and less trips on what we call a peak PM hour, which is in the evening, people coming and going to shopping on Saturdays. Additionally, the other action that the city council took, and the other action we're recommending with this specific plan is to eliminate drive-through restaurants, which are a huge number of trips, several thousand trips per day, and fuel stations. Both those account for probably the highest volume of vehicle trips in the city of any land use. Now, we do have one drive-through restaurant that has already been approved through use permit, it's a Taco Bell, right at Del Rio, and right at El Camino Route, right in the corner, that can still proceed. What we're talking about after that in the future, essentially, we could do sit-down restaurants, we could do other land uses, but restricting those is critical to maintaining the traffic levels of this intersection without doing very substantial reconstruction of the interchange. So by doing the traffic analysis, what we have found is, we actually can reduce the environmental impacts by changing the land use plan, by dialing it back. So that allows us to do what's called this addendum. Now, if we were changing this land use plan, changing this specific plan to make it more intense, and adding a lot more traffic to it, and making things a lot more intensive, we would have a problem, because we would be creating additional environmental impacts. And under CEQA, in that sort of a scenario, you'd have to recirculate the EIR and redo the EIR. In this case, we're actually reducing the environmental impacts by reducing the traffic, and then therefore, we can reduce and change the mitigation, and change those traffic plans, and we'll talk about that. So, because of the reduced mitigation, I'll show you some images in a minute. What we had here was a series of three roundabouts, I'm actually going to come back to this slide. So here's the intersection of El Camino Real and Del Rio. We're all familiar with how this works, to our left in this image is Highway 101. The bottom of the screen is the existing Mission Oak Shopping Center with the gas station on the corner. And the rest of these properties around these three sides of Del Rio and El Camino are essentially vacant, with the exception of the new hotel, it's just outside of this image. When the original specific plan was approved, several years after, we created this graphic that showed all of the proposed conceptual projects around here. This is what the mitigation came up with, a series of roundabouts. Walmart being responsible for doing the one at the intersection of Del Rio and El Camino, and then the city in partnership with development fees, doing the other roundabouts on either side of the overpass. Very expensive, very significant work, this work would have taken a lot of private land from all of these intersection areas, in addition to a lot of grading, because you've got slope on both sides of this overpass. And you've got a lot of coordination with Caltrans. So, going back, what we've proposed in this amendment is two much simpler mitigation measures that can accommodate what we think will be the near-term build-out in the specific plan. And when we look at these traffic numbers, we not only look at what's going to build in the specific plan, but what's going to build outside the specific plan at build-out of the general plan, assuming all these properties were full around there with what we've approved them to be developed with under our general plan scenarios. So there's two different things here, one is just revising the signal timing at Del Rio and El Camino Real. It just means that someone goes into that great big box that you see on the side of the road, and they reprogram some lights to change the timing in there. It's a little more technical than that, actually, but that's essentially it, and just doing that alone gets us some additional trips and allows us to start some development within the portion of the specific plan, so that one of the property owners can move forward with development. The second one, it's more significant, is simply adding what we call a right-turn lane on Del Rio. Let's say you're heading south on El Camino Real, and you're making a right turn on Del Rio towards the freeway at 101. There would be an additional right-turn lane that would allow you just to go freely onto the freeway on the northbound lane. Because there's some slope there, it would take a little retaining wall adjacent to the vacant lot there that's proposed to be built with the. that's proposed to be built with the Taco Bell. And it does also trigger the need to do some changes to the traffic signals because the curb radius would be different and we'd have to repave the street, put in a median, restripe everything and redo basically the entire intersection. But essentially, the main change is adding that right turn lane, widening out the road. It does require the city to purchase private land on the side of the road there. But that mitigation is far less intensive than the major roundabout project. And I'll show you a graphic of exactly where that is. Essentially, it's this little area in between El Camino and Highway 101. It means widening this out. And there would be, and then instead of an additional lane in this area that would solely be for getting on the freeway. And what that does, it relieves the queuing as people are leaving these commercial properties on the north side of El Camino Real, also helps them coming from the south as they make a left turn on the Del Rio as well. So again, that means canceling out this roundabout project, allowing specific plan development to move forward at certain phases as they complete each one of those improvements. And essentially, what they would do is they could either help the city build that project and get reimbursement or they would actually pay what's called an in lieu fee. They'd pay a fee towards that particular project in addition to the regular traffic impact fees to allow us to move forward. Here's an image of that corner again. This is the main area that we're talking about. This is it today. It's looking a little shabby today, a little rough. This was when it was under construction last year. Still, you know, very, very, very undeveloped part of the city with a great potential to add jobs, economic development, simply by modifying this mitigation, widening this little portion of Del Rio Road, a low retaining wall in here, modifying these curves, modifying and widening the lanes here. And some of the work would actually need to be done as development moves forward anyway, as they do their own carnage improvements. And here's the engineer's version of that mitigation as well and the line work, if you understand how to read that. This shows and illustrates what we've measured here in terms of the dimensional characteristics of how we would need a little bit of land here, which would still allow the Taco Bell to be built in its location where it's been proposed and approved with a use permit that we looked at last year and still allow some additional commercial development over here to happen. In fact, saves a lot of land from all four of these corners where the previous roundabout project had taken a large portion of that. Now, what happens if we get more development than what we're assuming in this land use scenario? So if a very intensive project comes back to the table, like a large regional store, something that's even more intensive than that, then we still have an option. But that would require widening the Del Rio overpass bridge. Now, that's something that Caltrans is looking at doing in the future anyway, but that could be 20 years out. So right now, we're not going to be collecting fees for this project. We're assuming that's a later project. And assuming that if something comes in that wants to have this higher traffic use, we'll have to look at the regional traffic at that time and see what options we have. But essentially, what we see is that when the evening hour trips exceed 293 cumulatively in that peak hour across that specific plan area, in addition to regional build out, we're probably going to have to get to a spot where we widen the bridge and do some different things. But it's kind of a what if, because traffic is changing, things are changing. COVID itself has changed the land use world and people working at home and telecommuting. And some of those things are going to be long term. Now, so as I mentioned a little bit earlier, there is costs to doing this. And those costs do need to be distributed throughout the specific plan area and throughout the city. In essence, the, we have worked with a financial consultant over the past year. We've worked with traffic engineers over the past two years. And through that, we've determined that the very first improvements, that's just modifying the traffic signal timing, is something that needs to be tied directly to development. So the first developer that wants to come in and develop in a specific plan would do that traffic signal coordination work in terms of development costs fairly inexpensive. Once you get to a certain trip threshold, you would need to pay for, you would need to provide the improvements at Del Rio. Either, in either scenario, you've got to pay towards those improvements. Now, overall, the Del Rio specific plan is only responsible for 38% of the overall improvements to that intersection. Now, our cost estimates have come in. This includes all the traffic signal work and all the widening, the retaining wall, buying property, working with Caltrans, Caltrans right away, repaving all the streets, comes out to about four and a half million. That's with escalation costs over the next few years. And that's an estimate. Quite a lot, quite a lot of money. Now, the specific plan would be responsible for 38% of that. The rest of it comes from citywide traffic impact fees and folds in that way. Now, it sounds like a lot, but it's a lot less than the original mitigation plan. What I'd like to shift to now, talking about is the rest of the specific plan. What are we doing with it? And that's why you've got such a large staff report tonight. We have proposed amendments in there to make the specific plan more flexible to new development. We did revise the language in there to remove specific items like specific retail uses and specific things that we thought were coming when we designed this specific plan. Instead, made it more general to say, hey, you can do X number of square feet of commercial. Here's your following land uses. We did take out the rest, the fast food drive through restaurants and the fuel stations. And we also looked at this with an eye towards allowing light industrial. In other words, allowing job centers in here, something that might have an office, a business park, along with some warehousing onsite. That's where the demand is today. And that's where we revised the design standards to meet that. And at the same time, in the EIR, we've had to revise the mitigation measures to match that specific plan and match all of those things. Here's an image of what's being proposed today, just to give you that idea. This is the property on the north east side across the street from the former Walmart property. This is the kind of thing that's being proposed. This is a business park that's being proposed. And right now, in the specific plan, that business park proposal is about 190,000 square feet. Some of it overlaps and goes outside the specific plan, so it'd be a total of about 210. This is really a major impetus for doing a specific plan amendment is a proposal like this to look at business park for that portion of the property, which is great because it provides a job center, reduces the traffic you'd normally get for retail and some of those higher traffic uses. So what are, what are the next steps? How can we get there? We've been looking at this thing left and right, up and down for a couple of years now. There are some more steps to do. So this specific plan amendment and this CEQA amendment or EIR amendment or addendum, whichever you want to call it, is the very first step. Then I've got to rely on Nick, I think he's on the line here too as well, Nick's team and Public Works, to work with the property owner and the city council to adopt what we call a plan line setback. What does that mean? That means we have to move our planned road improvement edge out towards private property. We have to work with the property owner to acquire that private land. We have to set up an agreement to do that. We have to get an appraisal for what that land costs and we have to pay fair market value for it. And then we do that and then we can establish an area where we can actually widen out Del Rio Road. We also have to get very accurate cost estimates for the cost of the mitigation so that we can really equalize that fair share payment and make sure all of those costs are accurate. So then, at that point, development can happen. They can apply for a master plan of development amendment. Still needs to go back to this planning commission so we can look at all the things they want to build and we can lock that in and approve their project and let them go forward with construction permits. That's easy, that's the easy part. What we're looking at tonight, I think, is, in my opinion, the more technical, more challenging part. It's looking at the entire land use plan and the environmental impact report amendments. So it really, in summary, this part of the city is the only large flat commercial land that has significant potential, that we've really got to plan carefully. We've really got to facilitate what happens here. And we see this as one of the paths of doing that. The reason it's been vacant, it hasn't been the economy, it's been the fact that the specific plan and the way the IR was written set up a path that we thought was logical, but unfortunately, that path turned out that it locked up development for many years. So we hope that this plan will maximize the economic potential, give us the adequate infrastructure we need for the future, help us out with the future tax base and really provide an opportunity for head of household jobs, which is really the biggest shortage in Tascadero right now. As you know, I mean, we are a bedroom community and everyone commutes out. Before I get to the alternatives, I do want to leave you with a recommendation. This recommendation is simply the adoption of the resolution. And we've got a task sheet report which would recommend the city council approve the addendum to this EIR that we did certify for the Del Rio Commercial Area Specific Plan. And this would be the second addendum that we would have done in this specific plan of performance for the Annex Hotel or for the Hilton Homes Suites Hotel. And we're asking that we determine that addendum, together with the previously certified EIR, would serve as the appropriate environmental documentation for the specific plan amendments and recommend this to the city council to approve those amendments. Going back to the alternatives, we can, we can talk about modifications. In fact, I think we had a request today to add a land use to that land use table that we have in our specific plan that we're proposing. We may get a comment on that tonight. I understand, we'll see if that comes forward. We can also continue this if need be, or we can recommend denial. Now, we do have a date set for city council on the 22nd. We'd like to keep that. But if we do need a lot more information or if we need to continue, we can do that. But for now, what I'd like to do is open it up to questions and see if the planning commission can make sense of my, my presentation. I'd be happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. A lot of information there.
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
Anybody on the planning commission have questions for staff, for Phil? Jan, you're up.
Yep. So just as we did a lot of research in the past for the, when it was the Walmart Annex property, thinking that it was going to be, you know, retail and, I don't know, I think an Olive Garden or whatever in there. Upon what research, what kind of research has, have you guys done or has the city done to be steering us in the direction to developing it in this manner, a business park? Kind of, of direction is what I'm getting from it.
Sure. It's not just, it's not just research about what the land use trends are. It's the reality of what we're seeing in terms of applications. It's also the reality of what we have on the ground. If you look at the city now, we have a vacant Kmart center with vacant retail pads all through it, with vacant retail property across the street. We have a semi vacant retail center at the south end of the city where we have a gym and other things in an area where we used to have the Spencer's Grocery Store. And we have several vacant pads out front of where we have Smart and Final now in the parking lot, believe it or not. So we have a lot of space for retail uses that aren't being utilized and taken up. So there's your first indicator is we're probably, we have enough capacity for retail. But do we have enough land for the head of household jobs? We see in these cities that surround us. And we have a lot of demand for that all the time. We hear the demand. People call and say, hey, do you have a space for a, you know, 20,000 square foot building? I've got my business, I want to move into a Tascadero. No, we don't. We don't have anything that is ready to go, that can fit that right now. So we know by collecting data over the last several years where that demand is. We know by sharing this information with our other local cities regionally and even statewide in hearing from other planners and other communities what's happening with the retail world. As, you know, first of all, we took several steps towards internet sales over the last decade and retail sales has dropped, onsite retail sales has dropped every single year. Now, starting in March of this year, we didn't just take an incremental step. We took a leap off a cliff.
No dive, yeah.
In person retail sales, except for grocery. You'll notice your grocery stores are the busiest place ever anymore since, since COVID. You know, and that's something that may be cyclical, that's changed, that's COVID. That's, that's, you know, a pandemic situation. But the general trend even before that came was that the kind of store you used to go to, like Kmart Shopping Center with a, with a strip mall, is no longer in style. People don't get attracted to go to that anymore. What they want is experiential. They want to go somewhere where, hey, I've got a great restaurant. I can walk around a little bit. I can go shopping. I have somewhere to take my kids. I have somewhere to take my car. I can do these kinds of things. And have it in a nice environment where it's comfortable and there's interesting things going on. That kind of center really works. They call it the experiential center. That's the kind of thing that the Feral Creek Project across the freeway is proposing now. Those things are successful. Business parks are successful because you've got people that have to go there, right? They're working, they're producing things, they're doing things. But the Kmart's of the world or similar, these small retail stores, they're really, really struggling. And the demand for space for those is, is continuing to drop every year. And that's primarily what this Del Rio specific plan was, was anchor store surrounded by smaller retail pads. And even in, in Paso Robles, if you go out to the, the Lowe's Shopping Center out there, you'll notice that all their small retail pads surrounding the Lowe's Center there are all vacant. And, you know, they've had similar issues out there in San Luis Obispo down by where, you know, Sears left and several other stores left. And luckily, they've had some stuff come back in there, but it's a real struggle. You look up at the Home Depot Center here in Tascadero, you've got four or five vacant pads that are vacant for the last 15 years now that haven't filled in. There's no demand for that stuff. It's very challenging. So those are some of the things that have led us very strongly to the conclusion that we've been led to today that this probably isn't going to be a retail center. This is going to be something else, whether it's hospitality or jobs, or a mix of the two, or a mix of residential, a mixed use above, above those things to make it really work. That's where we're seeing the permit demand, that's where we're seeing the requests.
Phil, I have a question. The, the Maresco Building, I think it's called the Maresco Building on 41. You know what I'm talking about, the one that's a little ways up towards Monterey. I remember when that was being built vaguely. I mean, I remember, I don't remember what year it was. I just remember seeing it go into construction. It's, I think it's a really attractive building. What kind of planning went into that first? Was that, did, did he already have people that was ready to move into that? Or did he build an attractive building and people saw that and say, hey, I'd like to have my business in that? I mean, what was, what kind of came first with that one? And then I know he built, and then he added to it. And then that one seems to be, it's all filled in.
I thought that that was built for a specific user. That's a very unique development because it was built very, very high end. It was built with a lot of upstairs, really high end office space. And it took a while to get it filled in, but it is now. But it seemed like it was built for a specific user. And the trend now is to not have that really high end office space. Offices like that, people are actually working a lot from home in a situation like that. But nowadays, the trend is to have an office space, but then have a roll up door next to you so that you've got shipping and receiving and you're making products and you've got people working on things. And then you've got your office or your mezzanine attached to that. And you've got a light industrial business park type office instead of this high end kind of, you know, executive type office. So that, that's really unique over there. But the trend is really more of the, the combination of light industrial and office, which is the roll up door and the space of store, indoor storage and the office all combined. It's incredible how much that is in demand.
Okay. Thank you, Phil. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you, Paul.
Dwayne, you're up. You're, you're muted, Dwayne. Dwayne, Dwayne, you're muted.
Sorry.
There you go.
There we go. Okay, so Phil, um. I think we just were, I think it was in the DRC, wasn't that we just looked at a like like a smaller business park usage just north of there. Where that that guy used to have that event center and whatnot. And seeing to me, he was talking about like, you know, oh, there might be like some eating establishments going in there. There might be all sorts of different things. So when we're talking about business park, we're really like it is an open kind of concept where. Like you said, experiential things can be there as well as maybe like somebody has a. A smaller, you know, manufacturing thing that's inside a building and stuff. So that that's. So that's what you're saying is that we're we're broadening this definition out so that like we can take a lot more. Different applica- or applications for it.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it could be. I mean, for example, when they built Tin City in Templeton. It was done as a business park. They nobody had ever planned it to be this. Really wildly successful brewery park. That wasn't the idea. The idea over there was a job center. With light industrial and offices and some retail and even some restaurants and they're all allowed out there. And this would be the same kind of thing. We can allow restaurants. We can allow retail. But we can also allow. The light industrial, the maker spaces, the brewery, the winery. Someone who wants to have a shipping and receiving and internet based service. You know, something like that all together.
That's awesome.
So it's it's a little more of a mix rather than having a strip mall where you've got little tiny cut up, you know, shops. Where you don't have those options. So it's really, it's pretty broad. And we think that's where. Things are right now and in the future.
Okay, also, just to get, I was trying to get some perspective on things here. So you mentioned that. If we exceeded 293 peak hour trips. That's when we would trigger that now the mitigation to the to the roads. That we are talking about with the signals and the widening and the on ramps and whatnot would that that would be. We'd have to go to a bigger project. So currently. I mean, you may not have the this at all, but like so talking about like, like where Cooperal comes in or or. Santa Rosa, which are probably the two worst. What kind of numbers do we have there at that would correspond?
Yeah, so unfortunately, you know, when when our town was built and they built a freeway through it in the 50s. Your size, every single one of our overpasses. So if you look at each one of them, whether it's. San Enselmo and Curb Real and Santa Rosa, they're all undersized. They're all what we call at capacity. San San Enselmo has, you know, In-N-Out Burger alone really crushes the numbers over there. And it gets bad at peak hour at 5:00, 6:00 PM. Santa Rosa, herbal, same thing. So what are those numbers over there? Let me see, Nick, are you on? We have a public works director on to see if he can. Give some kind of real rough limits of what we do have over there at the peak hour. And again, those are similar situations because you've got. El Camino, Highway 101, a short distance in between the two. And very low space for queuing and you've got traffic signals. So what happens is your queuing backs up. It's the queuing, in other words, stacking of cars that creates what we call a failure. And causes delay that goes beyond what we, you know, we expect.
Do you want me to weigh on on that, Phil?
If you've got any wisdom on, I think what his question was. Was what what are our? Do we have any kind of random ideas of what our PM peak is on these other intersections? Are we failing? You know, on those other, I mean, I'll tell you right now, level of service A and B is what Del Rio is today, but these other intersections are not. Isn't that right?
Yeah, I mean, right now they're working pretty good. I mean, obviously they're all going to get impacted. With increased traffic. We have done some. Traffic sensitivity analysis for what we expect to happen around this corridor. And when they do the traffic analysis, what they do is they look at a couple of things. One. How many vehicles are going to be generated by the proposed development? Two, what is the delay? That will occur at the intersection. So level of service is really. It's really associated with. Intersection. So how long does it take you to get through that intersection? Not necessarily. How long is it going to take you to get from San Enselmo to Del Rio on El Camino? You know what I mean? So if you think about when you're. Sitting in your car, it's usually at an intersection. So. And then the third thing it looks at is the queuing length. So how long are that like a? Left turn pocket and is it going to be exceeded? In this case, the critical thing is. Really the space in between the north. US 101 ramp intersection. And El Camino and Del Rio because it's such a short distance, you know, coming down that slope. With the Shell station on your right side. So. And that can be accommodated. The roundabout was going to come to let the cars flow through there freely. We can also accommodate it through traffic modifications. Lane reconfigurations, things like that. So. These are all the things that we look at with that. I can find specific numbers if you like, but I'll. You'll have to give me a few minutes to find it.
Yeah, I think he was looking for like, what is what is the scenario right now at Santa Rosa? Is that? I mean, during our PM peak hour at Santa Rosa. Is is that? Considered acceptable or is that, you know, reaching? Capacity at San Enselmo or Santa Rosa today? I mean, as a comparison, I think, is that what you're asking, Dwayne?
Yeah, I just, you know, trying to get a picture of of what we're talking about and whatnot, but. I think we all we all agree that those are probably, yeah, that at certain points it is actually just gridlock and. And and it's bad. So. I was just wondering if that if that 293 number looks like that.
I have a quick question on that note right there with you mentioned gridlock. That's probably a good way to describe it there. Now I don't. I'm not in that area at the at the worst time at the peak time. How long does that? That major congestion happen at that intersection at Santa Rosa intersection? I know that's one of the worst ones. How long does that last? Does it last an hour? Is it more? Is it a half an hour? Does anybody really know?
There, I can probably answer that question. There's two. There's a AM one and a PM, you know, peak hour. The AM is usually when people are trying to get their kids to Santa Rosa Elementary. It gets pretty congested along. That would be West Front, you know, along the Holiday Inn Express and along there. And then also at in the evening. That's that's not necessarily associated with the school. It is, but it's mostly associated with. The ASH, you know, Tascadero State Hospital when they. Have the end of their shift and I think they get out around 3:30 or something like that. So. A lot of the people are trying to get back up to Paso Robles or hop on there to go back to slow. And the people that are going to slow, they often will just go down El Camino and catch it at Santa Barbara. But so that's that's kind of what happens.
Well, my question is from the time it starts to get congested to the time it gets back to where it's flowing flowing normally. About how much time? Is that? Does it? Is it? Is it there for an hour?
Yeah, less than an hour.
Less than an hour.
I'd say 45 minutes, maybe to an hour.
Okay.
Yeah, lately it's been less because nobody's going to school in person. So.
Right.
It's it's a much less impact right now.
Right. Okay. Thanks, Nick. Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question.
Go for it, Tori, you're on.
Okay, so I know that part of the original plan included single family residence. Is that staying in and are we like? Is that going to be still part of the specific plan?
Yes, there's six single family residences that are already approved on the north. Side. And then there's also a multifamily section on the south side. Adjacent to the former Walmart site. Those are still in. And as an option, somebody could do some additional mixed use if they wanted to the future, you know, on the south end, but. Those two residential projects are still there.
Okay.
We have a change. You can't, what you can and can't do broadly. It's really only those drive through restaurants and the. Fuel stations that we've taken out.
Okay.
Anybody else have a question? Because I have one that I wanted to bring up. So I guess I don't see any hands. So I'll go for it. So Phil, on we talked about the the plan line setback. Adjustment that's going to have to happen. The gas station that was proposed by our Mets, is that still going to happen?
Yes, he has told us that he's postponed his project for now because of COVID, but he still wants to do it.
Okay, so if I remember correctly, I'm sorry, if I remember correctly, when when that came to us and as far as all the approvals. Wasn't that accounted for this this plan line adjustment? In terms of needing some of his property to be able to make that interchange work. This was during Walmart.
He did a lot line adjustment and property exchange with. The other property owner for the hotel. Which enables. You know, the hotel property owner to make his plan work. And was related to that, but there's a different property owner right at the corner where the Taco Bell site is, and that's the same property owner as the hotel. And. It didn't, that gas station did not actually result in. Adjusting the plan line setback or dedicating any property to the city. Just simply his frontage improvements were approved along the front. So the only property that. Would require a dedication of land or a purchase of land. Would be right at Del Rio at the Taco Bell site.
Oh, the the R Mets one isn't actually on the corner.
No, it's actually one end. So the R Mets kind of in the middle. And then in fact, I can go to a graphic here. I can show you.
Okay, so for the the plan that is has already been approved or discussed whatever for the Taco Bell. That one. It seems that I just recall it. Yeah, that being discussed that there's setbacks. Okay, I recall that. Now I forgot that that Taco Bell was right there.
Yeah.
We have to push that over enough to be able to accommodate. The new intersection. So that is that already been, is this going to have to change again possibly or?
No, it will fit. It will fit with the new setback with the new plan line setback. It's tight. It squeezes right in there. So what's going to happen is the. The new street edge is going to have to almost go right up to the drive through lane. There'll be a little bit of landscape space there. And then there'll be an easement over the top of the drive through lane so that the city could maintain that area. But it fits without having to slide it over as far as I understand. It's real tight. And then there's another building back here that's potential future restaurant or retail.
Right.
And then the R Met site, yeah, it's right in the center.
Okay.
Of this whole thing.
Yeah, I was thinking it was the one in the corner. So either way, you answered my question on that one. So.
Okay.
So, all right, any other questions from the commission before I open up the public comment? And I don't see any hands going up. So I will open this. Do we have anybody online for public comment on this?
We do. We have Ted Lawton on, so I'll let him speak.
State your name for the record, please, and you have three minutes. Go for it.
Yes, good evening, commission. Thanks for thanks so much for allowing me an opportunity to speak. But I do want to say that I really think your planning department has done a commendable job. In studying this and finding a way to lessen the impact of traffic. By restricting certain uses, but also allowing for flexibility for future use. I think that that is a very wise direction that that's being proposed this evening. One thing that I would like to ask is that maybe you would consider a recreational vehicle use as well. As part of this specific plan. I don't think that that has been included after reading the the report.
I'm sorry, sir. Could you state your name again for the record? I don't think it caught that.
Oh, so Ted Lawton.
Ted Lawton.
Coastal Communities.
Okay.
Yes, my apologies. And again, we're just asking that maybe the commission would consider adding a recreational vehicle. Use to, you know, for for like a park, recreational. Vehicle park as it as a use.
So actual overnight stay type of thing.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Anything else that you'd like to add?
No, just again, I really, I really believe that your planning department has done a fantastic job at. Being able to find a way to again reduce the traffic. While also by just restricting a few uses, while also creating an opportunity to have some more flexible use in the future. I think that's going to serve the city very well going forward.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Luke, do we have any other callers?
Hi, it's Mariah again. We have a couple people just listening. We might have. We might have one. Who wants to speak? I think Juanita wants to speak, so I'm going to open it up to her.
Okay. Go ahead, Juanita. If you would just state your name for the record, then you can begin.
Juanita McDaniel.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to know. Why another Taco Bell? Of all the other restaurants. That can be put in a Tascadero, why a second Taco Bell?
Okay, well, that's okay. Your question will be taken under advisement. So we're not going to answer questions online, but. When we're finished with public comment, I'll go ahead and let Phil address that, but. We will. I will see what Phil can say about why another Taco Bell. But thank you for your question. Okay, Mariah, do we have?
No, that was it. That was the last one on public comment from the phone.
Okay, so we have no more public comment, I'm assuming. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I'll close public comment at this point. Bring it back to the commission before commission asks any more questions. I'm going to turn ask Phil if he can. Respond to the potential for recreational vehicle use and why a Taco Bell.
Great, thanks. I'm going to tackle the first topic of RV park use. That is something that under the general plan designation of general retail. That could be allowed. And so it's completely at the pleasure of the planning commission. I would advise that if you do recommend to put that in, you put it in as a conditional use. So that we can ensure that it is limited in scope. And doesn't consume a large portion of the site and could be accessory to perhaps another. Traveler type use on this site, which might be good because they're in high demand. And so. That's something that's entirely up to the commission. You could make that recommendation to the council. We just didn't have a request for it when we were doing a specific plan. And again, it's something that's. Potentially. An option on a smaller scale with the use permit if it's done right in that center. The second comment. I think one of the biggest misnomers about city planning is that. City officials and can choose. What type of brands and what type of uses end up in certain locations? And I want to say all we can do is set up zoning. In a broad fashion and set up. Certain regulations we call property development standards. And property owners are allowed to come in and. As long as they follow those zoning standards can develop whatever they want. So we don't get to choose whether we get. You know, a Taco Bell or a Starbucks that we happen to have what for Starbucks in town? We, you know, if it was up to us, we would have, you know, I wish we had this menu we could choose from and choose the stores we want as a community. But we don't. We don't have that option. We just have to deal with what comes based on our zoning. So I think it's a delightful comment to hear because. I always, I always wish we could choose from a menu of different things to have.
Right. I have a question on the on the on the RV center potential. Now that that still falls into for the TOT tax as well. Is that is that correct?
That's a good question. I don't know. I think so. It's transient lodging. Would assume that it would, but.
I have a client that has an RV one in Moro Bay. He says that is there. I thought it was a little. I never thought about it, but it makes sense that it is. I just want to make sure Tascadero is. I mean, if it is, if it is, if it's not part of the TOT, it probably should be.
Yeah, this is Kelly. I believe that it does for stays of less than 30 days. So there's some RV parks that are designed for long term residency. But the ones that are designed for short term stays are covered under TOT. And so if you were wanting to add that use as a potential, you could also add. Certain findings that it be a transient. certain findings that it be a transient occupancy use and that it be subject to TOT. And then it would just encourage that type of RV, RV park.
The good thing about an RV park is it doesn't have a high-traffic generation associated with it because people come in their RVs and they park. And they're not coming and going all day long. They come once. So the good thing is about it is per area, if you've got five acres set up for that, you know, it's probably going to be way less traffic than five acres of retail or restaurant. So it's going to help the numbers a lot, actually. The key thing is that it aesthetically fits in and is compatible with the neighborhood. And it's got potential.
Yeah, I, go ahead, Dwayne. You're up.
I'm just, you know, looking at the map that's in front of us here, I'm just thinking that I would certainly not want to open that kind of thing up to where like we're faced with taking up some of what you would call more of the prime areas with it. There must be, you know, considering whatever the layout is, it might, might be an area that would work. But I guess you would address that in a conditional permit arena.
Yeah, this is Kelly.
Go ahead.
Kelly, again, one of the things that we've done in some of our use list is we have listed certain findings. So it may be a conditional use, but there's additional findings for those uses within the specific plan area. So if you did add RV parks, you could say they'd be limited to 20% of the site or five acres or a total of five acres in the whole specific plan and that they be transient occupancy. So you can make some recommendations for some specifics for RV parks within the specific plan area if you wanted to recommend that.
I, I think where you're headed, Kelly, sounds like a great idea, but I think to do that on the fly now would not be prudent. I, I think additional conditions to the condition, to the CUP certainly would be a good idea. I, I would like to see it somehow a part of the specific plan. Maybe the city council can, can discuss the specifics on how much of the site they can take up and, you know. I mean, there's a lot more obviously that goes into it than just say, just go ahead and throw it in there and have it as a conditional, a condition use. But I don't think we could do that tonight. So I mean, I'd like to see it part of it.
You could make that recommendation to the council, though, and we can further explore it in our report to the council if you so desire.
I'm, I'm certainly in favor of it. I mean, maybe I can pull the, the commission out. What do you guys think about it?
I like it. I like it because like Phil was saying, this is a use that, you know, one of the things that it would do is if, if we do get the transient tax, you know, I know one of the conditions that we're looking at is broaden the city tax base. It was somewhere in here. And that was a concern of mine when we start just like creating office space because you get nothing from that or, you know, business park space. But that's why I was asking about the various uses. So, you know, it, it has some positive things to it. It just don't want to let it be something where we go, oh, no, now we've got this in the middle of, the middle of the plot of land and we didn't want it there, you know.
Right.
It's a really great idea.
Yeah, I, I think if we can get people here to use our restaurants and, and other shopping and stuff, and that's the way they get it, just like a hotel, I see a lot of good potential with that. But it needs to be, I mean, the planning department, obviously, you guys know much better on the specifics on how to craft it into it. I would like to see it crafted into it one, you know, one way or another. And anybody else? Jeff, you got anything to say about it? You're an expert on this stuff.
Well, I would think it's a, it's a great idea. And I do think that we should direct the planning department to look at that as an option and give it as an option to the city council for that decision.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any other questions or comments on this? I think we might be ready for, for a motion. I think it was a good, very good report, Phil. Appreciate that. There's a lot of information here.
A lot of info.
I like the, I like the direction that this is going. I think this is really going to, this is going to be really nice when it, you know, when it gets built out. But there's a lot of potential here for the economic development. That's one of the most important things for our city. So.
There's a lot of, a big team that went into this. It wasn't mostly me, actually. It was primarily Kelly, our senior planner, and Nick DeBarre, our public works director, and a lot of traffic consultant work and a lot of financial consultant work. This was a long time coming, so a lot of.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Kelly and Nick, if you're still on too. So any more discussion or somebody want to make a motion to move forward on this?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, that we adopt the draft resolution recommending that the city council approve the addendum.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Sorry, this is Kelly. Did there want to be an addition for RV park recommendation to the council?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we, we do want to do that.
Are you, are you recommending that RV parks be added as a conditional use with some additional parameters to make sure that TOT is collected and that it's not a primary use for the sites?
Yeah, what she said.
Mark, what do you, what do you think?
Yeah, Dwayne, I think that's what we talked about, was the conditional use permit with, with additional parameters and so on. She just wants you to word it, reword it into your, your motion, I think.
Okay, so, yeah, and that we also add that we have a recommendation to further explore the RV park and like, you know, like she stated on those things, the taxes and the conditional use permit parameters.
That sounds good.
Okay, and Tori, you resecond?
Yes, I resecond with the addition.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Nick, can we get the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Wolf?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Van den Eyck?
Yes.
Chairperson Daris?
Yes.
Motion passed at 6:00. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Annette. Okay, that was good. All right, we're on to commissioners' comments and reports. Does anybody have anything they wish to bring up at this time? Anybody in the commission? Seeing nobody raise their hand, then I will move on to the director's report. Phil, you're back up.
Thank you, Chair. Well, our next hearing is scheduled for the 15th. And I know we've got a couple items coming up for that. I think we, oh, Annette, are you there? Do you have the list in front of you? I don't have the list in front of me.
Yeah, one of them is Woods Humane Society and the other one is, I believe it's a mixed-use project.
Wow, that's going to come fast. Okay, yeah, so we have the, Woods Humane Society is considering, and I hope we can get to you by September 15th, but they're considering adding a component to their site out of Ramona Road where they currently have their cat facility where they do spay and neuter services and where they also have cat adoption services. They're wanting to add dogs to that site in addition to that facility. And.
Yes, dogs.
That's a, it's a difficult discussion because dogs are more challenging to house than cats just because of the noise. And we do have a neighborhood there. But one of the, the biggest deals with that is our zoning has two definitions. It has one for an animal hospital, which is a clear definition, and it's another one for a kennel. And Woods Humane Society is kind of in the middle of those two because they're kind of a clinic, but you can't take your dog there and get it taken care of. They only take care of the dogs that they adopt out. And it's kind of a kennel, but you can't take your dog there on vacation when you go on vacation. So what are they? And so I think we've been having a debate here at the city about what they are, whether they're a kennel or a hospital or something in between. But the big deal is, the reason that's a big deal is because that site, the way it's zoned, doesn't allow, doesn't allow dog kennels, but it does allow animal hospitals with a use permit. So we've got to struggle with that question. That's really the topic. And I think what Woods Humane Society does is fantastic, and I've been to their facility in San Luis Obispo and I'm convinced they'd be fine, but we still have to work with the zoning definition. So that's one discussion. We can't talk about that tonight because it's not on the agenda, but I'll just kind of let you in on that issue. But the other one, I think we have this really interesting, oh, I think, yeah, that's going to go to the design review committee before it comes to you anyway. The other topic is, the design review committee is a mixed-use project. And I don't think that one will actually come to planning commission because it's an allowed use in our downtown. We've got a really nice mixed-use project for trafficway that is going to be multi-story, have a little commercial on the ground floor. And that's being proposed on a kind of a slope vacant site along trafficway right next to where Forager Distillery is there, kind of as you head down towards the Fine Arts Academy. So we're looking at that.
Phil, Phil, I can interrupt you for a second. So we've seen at least, I think, two projects proposed for that. Is this going to be, is this the third one or a variation of one of the first two?
This is the third one. This is a new property owner. This new property owner has done a fantastic job on the design. The new property owner is an architect and he's taken this project on himself, and I think it's really, it's really neat. So we're hoping this is the one. Third time's a charm. See how that one goes. Anyway, I also am available if you've got other questions about other things that are happening in the city. It's, you know, I'll tell you, just in summary, it's a really, really challenging time. And, you know, we're trying to keep our tins up because we're, you know, we're watching businesses suffer and we're there to try and help them, but it's really hard. And it's, it's not just us. It's everybody else in the world right now that's dealing with that. But I will tell you, there's some great projects still happening. The Plaza project is moving forward wonderfully and it's coming together. There's a great beer garden right next to that that already has tenants that are coming in. It's very similar to the project that's in Paso that's, that's called The Backyard. Then the mixed-use project I just talked about, and there's a couple others that are coming to fruition. So even though we're in this trying time, there's really some need development stuff happening. And we're getting a lot of activity. We're really busy at City Hall. It's just a bummer to have to walk around downtown and just see that everything's barely open and it's, it's tough to get out and, and socialize with people, you know.
Yeah. Okay. I think Jan has a question.
Yeah. Phil, I'm getting a lot of people asking me about the status of the downtown enhancement plan. And by that I mean the project of redoing the parking, et cetera, from, on El Camino from Moro Road to Traffic Way. And I know that when COVID struck mid-March, we were kind of on the verge of having some public meetings and where, you know, the public could weigh in on their feelings about the, you know, the proposed parallel parking and that kind of thing. So where does that stand right now? And are we going to have, is the public going to have another opportunity to be able to weigh in on that project?
I'm so glad you asked. We actually did have three additional public meetings that were done via Zoom. We put that out as much as we could through our city's Facebook page. We advertised in the paper for it. We even had an open house here where we invited people to come in a few at a time into City Hall live and in person, but nobody showed up. And nobody showed up to our Zoom meetings except one or two people. So we brought the project.
People knew about it.
We.
I honestly don't think people heard about it.
I know. It's, it's a really tough time to get public participation right now.
Yeah, I understand.
Even before, before the March COVID hit, we had about 12 different public workshops where we gained public comments and we changed the project. It went to City Council last month. I should have brought this up. And they did approve the concept. So the concept is approved now. We are applying for a grant right now. And I'm happy to share what the council approved and the conditions they put upon it. It actually, a lot of the public comments we heard got incorporated into the project and it got changed into a really, really nice concept that addresses emergency access, emergency responders, parking, and all of the other traffic issues that we were concerned about. And on the night of the city council hearing, we had 135 public comments from 135 different people.
Wow.
We could have been there at 1:00 AM, but they decided to cut it off at a certain point at 11:30. So it was very widely notified. 134 of those 135 letters that we received were in support of the project. One was not. And those that were in support were primarily the business owners of the downtown. Almost all of them came out to support the project extremely positive. And so the council, 5-0, voted to support the concept.
Okay. You know, it's funny, I've seen some comments on, on Facebook where it seemed like there were quite a few people that were opposed to it. So that's, it's interesting you didn't say that.
Yeah, I was on Facebook and I was encouraging people to write the city council and let the city know if they were against it. You know, I was sharing email addresses, the Facebook post. I was sharing everything because I wanted to make sure people were able to, you know, express their views. And so I listened to the city council meeting. I called in as well. And yeah, there was only one grumpy old man who was against it and everyone else was very, very much in support. So, you know, I think that if people are upset about it, they can still write and let them know, but it just seems like people complain, but they don't actually take any action. So they're, you know, they're SOL now. They've had their chance. There's been plenty, plenty of time. The email addresses are public. It's not hard to get into contact with people, so. Yeah, it was actually really cool to hear all the businesses come out. I was, I was really impressed.
There's such a stark difference between what people do on social media on Facebook compared to what they actually do when it comes down to coming to a hearing and writing a letter. It, people say the most horrible things on social media. We put stuff on social media that we think is the best thing ever and it just.
Yeah, it gets you in a park.
People love to, to, to lurk around in the social media. So, you know, it's very, it's an unfortunate view of the reality, unfortunately. But the reality is, I mean, the community wanted this and the council approved it. And the question is, can we feasibly build it? It's pricey. It is a game changer for our downtown that we desperately need for safety and for commerce and to bring our downtown together. And we are applying for grants, but it's going to take a little while.
Well, I like it. I think it's going to be a great change for downtown. I think it's going to just make it much more inviting than what it is. And I just think it's going to transform downtown along with the Plaza project, so.
It's going to make a Tascadaro really unique and beautiful. I can't wait.
Absolutely. So, okay, anybody else have anything for the good? Seeing none, then I will adjourn the meeting till September 15th at 6:00 PM. Thank you, everybody. Great meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you. See you later.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you, city, for all your work. We appreciate you.